I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting as of Tuesday, August 6, 2024. Welcome to all of those that are here and all of those that might be listening via live stream and so forth. A very special day today, as later on we will dedicate and have a groundbreaking of the Lincoln County Justice Center. And so an exciting day for us and events coming up. I guess to begin with, is there any public input about the agenda? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Now, as far as Board action to approve the consent agenda items, is there any public input on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Ehrens. Any discussion? If not, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Let's go on to our regular business. Item number one. Alicia, will you read that for us, please?
This is a public hearing to consider two applications for a temporary on-sale liquor license to operate outside the municipality for David Dershon, 57015 Bar LLC, Chancellor Bar. For a special event to occur on August 17th and 31st, 2024, located at Prosper Country Warehouse and Event Hall, 46620, 278th Street, Lenox, South Dakota, 57039.
Okay. With that being said, is the applicant here? The applicant is not here? Okay. Are there any proponents that wish to speak in favor of this? Any opponents, then? I guess if none, is there anyone on the commission that would like to make a motion in regard to this?
I move to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that with the statement that this is a new event hall that was just opened outside of Lenox. I think they've got a very nice facility, been in it, and I think they all act responsibly. I haven't heard anything. If you check with the sheriff for anything, we've never had any issues, so I can vote in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. There was a motion by Landine and a second by Schmidt. Is there any discussion? If you're in on, Alicia, call the roll then, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Moving on to their second item. Commissioner Ehrens?
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chair. Got some folks from the city of Canton here who have asked to be heard regarding cost sharing for an engineering study regarding Cedar Street in Canton. I don't know what they're going to say this morning, so I appreciate them coming forward and being willing to be heard. I did have some discussion with folks from city of Canton after the most recent devastating flooding that the city went through, and it does seem that we need to get some communication going with the city of Canton here. You know, that flooding that happened, we had water penetration here in the courthouse because of it, came right through Jack Fox Park, sitting right behind us here. So clearly, it's whatever's going on with the flooding and water flows is definitely impacting our public facilities, and it's creating some cost. So maybe it's time we get the communication going here and find out how we can work with our city partners and see if anything needs to be done. So I look forward to hearing from Mr. Garbers today and anybody else the city of Canton brought.
Okay. With that being said, please state your name and address.
Paul Garbers, 1016 Angeline. Here on behalf of the city, as we're all well aware of the water that came in during the flood that night, Friday night, about 10:30, I was up on the end of Cedar Street, which is the street, just a block over, which is on the west side of school. It'd been raining for a while, but it was probably a four, four-and-a-half-foot wave of water coming through the school's chain link fence. Now, after the flood had subsided and maybe a week later, I took a walk to see where the grass was laying down because of the water. The track field of the school, I don't know if it was a practice park, but the sand was, agri line was all washed out. For a while, you could see how far up on the fence the water was because of the cornstalks. The school, I'd had talked to Russ Townsend, they had not taken it to the Board, to take it to the Board of the City last night, and we voted five to zero to look into hiring an engineering firm or send out a statement of interest to see where this water's coming from. I know there's people here that would like to talk, that own property up on the north end of Cedar Street. But yes, that water all came down Cedar Street, and you guys were lucky recipients of water in your basement, so along with everybody on Cedar Street and elsewhere. So I guess I would, I don't know how you can do it, but if we could get a vote to sign out a statement of interest to engineer firms and see who would be interested in looking into that for us.
Are there any questions, comments by the commission for Mr. Garbers?
Paul, we don't have this on our agenda for an action item today, but I think just generally, we'd be interested in, you know, and speaking for myself, I'd be interested in seeing if they would, you know, look at that and maybe what the cost would be, and then we could talk about a cost share, if they can give you something like that in advance.
Would that affect, Paul, would that affect all the people, our lot, many of the residents on Cedar Street?
It's pretty much all the way from the school all the way down to where it's over to here. Now, if you turn water, you're turning water on somebody else, but it was brought up in the meeting last night that maybe we should get Birmingham Northern or whoever owns the railroad tracks to see if they would join us in that study, because that water, some of that water didn't make it over to the east side of the railroad tracks, but I walked the railroad tracks from the school down to Fifth Street. Yeah, it's going someplace else, so I think we need to do a responsible study and see, I don't know how far north it goes, you know, the gentleman's going to come up and talk. He knows he owns a little strip between the school and the railroad tracks, and he's got some insight of it, too.
You know, Paul, I was told once by John Peters that when before Canton was Canton, that this was a drainage way, that there was a definite route that water took through this whole area, and the courthouse sits right on one. It'd be interesting to see whether John could resurrect that, whatever they called it, a crick or a creek or whatever drainage way it was called. So maybe that's why when nature put this thing together, we happened to be in that pathway, but that's something you could look at.
Yep.
I know a few blocks east of the courthouse, there's kind of like an underground stream where a lot of people there for years have had water that they've had to have some pumps and so forth, just continuous. So yeah, there could very well be. Commissioner Schmidt?
I think, you know, Paul, I mean, if you folks at the city want to write your letter of interest, and then maybe if you want us to sign off on it, maybe just bring it back, and we can vote on sending the letter out as a joint letter.
We can have a review next week.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to speak on this matter?
Good morning.
Chad Hoekstra, 320 West Lynn, which is right to the west of Cedar Street, North Cedar, by the high school. As Paul noted, I walked up to the north, I got flooded too, not near as bad as people on Cedar Street, but I still had water and had water issues all over my property, too. When we moved in there, oh, I can't even remember what date it was, the flood of 14 affected Jim, who used to live there, as I did, and then we've had flooding since then. But when the PAC Center went in, the flooding got worse, and they added a pipe coming from the high school through my property into those railroad tracks areas. Well, that adds more water into it, whether, how far north, well, like I said previously, I walked up a mile north, or drove, sorry, to the dead end road up there, and you can see on both sides of the tracks, water is streaming down both sides of the railroad tracks. And I have pictures, if you'd like to see, it's after the flood, flood, of course, but there's, the culverts on Cedar are, on the west side is far too small, it's plugged most of the time. The one on the east side, I think, is also too small, the one on the west side is way too small. But I definitely think the railroad would be very difficult to deal with. I've dealt with them in the past, but their input and would probably be a big part, too, to solve this issue, because I haven't lived there maybe nine years or somewhere in that area, but I know it's been a problem for many, many years, and there also is a broken field tile up there by the practice field. That's been that way, according to my neighbor who used to live in my house when he was a child, and he's in his 50s. So some things that have been overlooked, pushed to the side over the years, not with this commission, maybe so much for the city commission, but previous commissions, where they didn't want to deal with it, but being part of Cedar Street, not so much on it, it's very frustrating to come home and, oh, suck up more water, tear out more sheet rock, deal with sewage, but we definitely would appreciate if the county could get involved and maybe, maybe get something resolved, just for as the county residents and the city of Canton, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thanks for listening to these folks this morning, and, you know, while I'm sitting here listening to Mr. Hoekstra, I kind of thought, well, maybe we should approach the school district as well. I don't know, Paul, have you guys talked to them yet about this or not? I did talk to Russ Thompson, superintendent. I told him that we'd go to the city and then you and I'd be back. Well, good, maybe we can get together as partners on this thing and try to figure something out. I think what Paul said is important here, it's that we just don't know, and that's why we need the engineering study to try to get some answers, get some questions to some of these answers, because we just don't know what's going on out there that relates to the flooding. I think deep down, we all kind of know what it is. Lincoln County serves as a collection basket for water from a number of growing cities to the north, and that water moves from the northeast, from the northwest to the southeast direction, trying to make it to the Big Sioux River, and we're all standing in the way of it here. So hopefully, this could be the start of trying to get our arms around this. It probably is not the silver bullet that's going to solve any flooding issues, but certainly could be a good model, maybe, to use for how the county can partner with cities in terms of being able to start addressing these flooding issues, because we've got 100-year events happening every five years now, and it's concerning, and that's the price of growth. And if we're going to continue to grow as a county, we're also going to have to address these issues, because there's a lot of people who suffer a lot of damage from flooding that don't get made whole from their insurance company, and that drives up insurance rates, and it drives up the cost of living for regular folks. So those are important considerations that I think sometimes folk policymakers don't take into consideration as the cost of living goes up because of those things. So I appreciate the support from the board here, and hopefully we can get our arms around it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ehrens. Before I move on to item number three, I guess I would request an executive session.
Thank you. I move to go into executive session under SDCL 252, sub-paragraph three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Question by Landine, second by Schmidt for executive section. All those in favor, will you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Landine and a second by Ehrens. Any discussion? Alicia, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Item number three, I need, first of all, a motion to bring item number three off the table.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Landine, second by Ehrens. Any discussion? Call a roll, Alicia, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Okay. Any discussion?
I'll kind of tee things off a little bit here, unless Drew, you wanted to come up.
Yeah, so, Commissioner, item number three, this has been kind of a long time coming of the commission's decision, which direction the access point to the Justice Center for road access and our sanitary sewer system. So this is just a discussion, and this is up to the board on which direction you're going to go, and that obviously would set up number four, possibly, that item's on there, but the floor is yours, Commissioner, I guess, from a perspective, and if you have any questions, I know Julie from Tegra is available, Stockwell Engineering's available. So we have our engineers, or, excuse me, our architects also available, so.
Drew, do you have that exact number that the city committed to last night at their meeting?
I believe it was 629,000.
Okay. So last night, the city, in meetings with the city discussions, we talked about option three of our list of options to put in sanitary and access to the courthouse, and the discussions were very productive, and the city voted unanimously to cost share in taking, putting in the sanitary and taking that road on west and going all the way to the north of our property with it, and then possibly going to work together to look to see if we can get some extra funding, whether through the state or the feds, to see if we could fully urbanize that section. So I appreciate the input, the meetings, the time that was spent with the city in talking about those things, and appreciate their unanimous vote last night. So I guess today, our cost share on that option to move forward was 721,000 and some change, and I think probably down the line, they're going to, you know, there might be an additional cost share, but at least for what we're looking at right now, it was that amount. So I like round numbers, so I would appreciate a board vote to put in the sanitary and the access up West Avenue in cost share in that with the city, and then, and then as far as item number four goes, that would be, my request would be that we commit to $725,000 cost share for improvements in the utilities along that corridor. Thank you.
Any other input here by the commission? Public input. Any public input on this matter? Please state your name and address.
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I, after what we just heard from the city about needing help with all the engineering and what's happening with the flooding here in Canton, I just find, you know, I, you know, I know that you're probably all going to vote on this, I'm surprised that the city actually was unanimous with this, just because of the money they're probably going to have to spend on fixing the sewer and the water thing in Canton. So I was surprised that they unanimously said that, but I just, so, we're up to 725,000, and you said that there might be more, and, you know, and the 84,000 for the Justice Center will probably be more. And, you know, I was looking at the expenses under consent agenda and the regular agenda. We're spending a lot of money, and then the city being here and the citizen talking about, you know, that's not going to be an easy fix. It's a lot of money, and I just wanted to, I was totally surprised that they, I should have gone, that they said unanimously, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? I guess no other public input, I guess I'll ask the commission to entertain a motion.
I would move to, I guess, approve option three that we were given by Henry Carlson Group to go up the, with the sanitary to go up West Street all the way to the north of our property.
Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. We have a motion by Landine, a second by Poppins. Any other discussion?
Just for clarity, Madam Commissioner, whose lead would be for, excuse me?
Mics off. Who would be the lead for the road improvement?
The lead for the road improvement? I don't know if I have an answer to that at this point. I mean, it's our, we're working under Henry Carlson with our contractors, so I'm assuming at this point that that would be us.
Yeah, that would be a detail that we'd hammer out in a formal agreement, so if that's the motion as of right now, there'd just be the commitment to the $721,000 and some change, and then we can reach a formal agreement and formalize that with the city of Canton.
Right.
So it'll come back to.
This decision is just, where are we going? Are we going to go up West Street, and how far are we going to go? And then the next item would be the amount.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, any other, yes?
Yeah. I appreciate the work. Everybody's done on this. Commissioner Landine, thanks for getting with the city of Canton, appreciate it. Lot of good work's gone into it. The reason I can support this, even though I didn't support the original site, but now that that is the chosen site, we've got to make decisions within that construct, and to me, of all the options we were presented, this is probably the most cost-conscious decision that saves taxpayers the most money, gives us access to the site, gives us the sanitary sewer access that we need, but also because of the contribution and the participation from the city of Canton, this sets up not just the courthouse for future expansion, but it also sets up the area around the courthouse for future expansion as well. So that's important, and maybe, maybe, there will be some cost recovery there in the future. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I hope that we can have those discussions if there are others who want to tap into that sanitary sewer system in the future. And the inference that I would draw also is that this will probably help the people who live out there as well, because it may give them the opportunity to also participate in the city's sanitary sewer system as well, instead of being on septic tanks. The other reason I like this option, though, is it avoids the necessity for the use of eminent domain. That's very important. I disagreed with the certificate of necessity that was previously passed, and to try to go through somebody's private property to do this, there was a lot of work done, and frankly, I think there was some resistance that had to be pushed through in order to actually come up with these options in the first place. So I'm glad that we didn't just hit the easy button here and execute through eminent domain. I'm glad that we actually took the time to develop different courses of action, and I appreciate our architects and engineers for running the traps on all of this to give us those different courses of action, so that we, as policymakers, could make the best decision possible. For whatever reason, all too often, unfortunately, decisions at the local level are just made how to get us from A to B, and sometimes we don't always get the best result when we go from A to B. Instead, we got to go A, B, C, and D. And in this instance, it's a perfect example of taking the time, run the numbers, get all the courses of action, and we actually came out with what I hope is a unanimous decision today. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, call a roll, Alicia.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Next item, Terry Floyd.
We just, yeah, we got to do four.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry.
Okay.
On four, which we already alluded to, what I guess I'm asking for from this commission today is another unanimous vote to commit $725,000 toward this cost share project with the city of Canton for access to our courthouse.
Okay. Any other public input? If not, is that your?
We need a second.
Yes. Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second for discussion. All that I want to say is I just want to provide a little transparency here today for taxpayers, just so folks know where the money's coming from. The 725,000 doesn't come out of the general fund budget for this year, it'll come out of the bond, that was passed, so it will leave money behind available to be spent on other priorities, presumably, so for that reason, I can support it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. We had a motion by Landine and a second by Ehrens. Go ahead, let's call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Now, Mr. Floyd.
Terry Floyd, highway superintendent. This morning, I'm looking for board action to approve me to send out requests for proposals from consultants for a comprehensive safety action plan for Lincoln County. Again, this is part of the Safe Streets for All grant that we were awarded last year. Contracts are signed, ready to go, so we have this proposal, we're ready to send out. We'll be getting ads out in the paper, we'll just be sending them to the auditors this week, so, for printing next week, so it should be open for about four weeks. So total cost of this project is going to be spread over probably a year and a half from now, so it could possibly spread into '26. I think we have finalization on this, on this plan early in '26. So total cost of the project is $100,000 from the federal grant and $25,000 local fund, so.
So total is 125,000?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. For those listening. Any questions for Mr. Floyd? If not, is there any public input on this matter? Okay, I guess I'll move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second by Schmidt and Landine. Is there any discussion? If not, Alicia, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes.
Next item I have for you?
Motion carried.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. I'm a little late there.
Next item I have is board action to authorize highway superintendent to receive quotes and move forward with an emergency.
to receive quotes and move forward with an emergency repair. And I have listed the structure number. It's 42-160-044. And this is County Road 134. This is up at Lake Alvin, where we had that damage up there. So we've gotten, we've sent out requests.
Did you say 134?
Sorry, 135. I apologize. Says it's 135. So we sent out to four different contractors, trying to get some quotes back for doing this work. We received quotes back from two. One was unresponsive. And then one sent back an email said, "We're not interested. We're too busy." So again, we're looking to do this under codified law 5-18A-9 under the emergency procurement. I do have, I don't know if any of you guys look at these pictures, but I have pictures here. Again, these are, these are really, they're distorted when they come into, come into civic clerk. It's not near that steep, but it is, there's probably a 10 to 15-foot drop-off initially right from the straight edge of the road. So this is something, this road is currently closed. And I believe the bids that we have or the quotes that we have, I have two of them. One of them is for Sukup. And his quote was for $212,000, or 200,000, 212,000, $212,000. The other one is First Rate, and they were around 375. Again, the engineer's estimate was about 415,000, the engineer's estimate for this project. So we're looking to get moving on this. If we can move forward, get this going. Sounds like this contractor is possibly ready to start, you know, soon, maybe now. So as soon as we get approval to do so, if we can. Like I said, this road is currently closed, and I'm getting a lot of complaints. Again, we're trying to go through the process. But they're, they're like, "Well, the road is fine. Well, it's the drop-off. It's a safety issue." So.
Is there a timeline for repair?
As far as when?
When and how long it would take?
Oh, for them to do this?
Yes.
Probably about two weeks, is what they're thinking. I know I have been in contact with at least one school district regarding this because this is a school bus route as well. And I told them, I said, "Hopefully, next week, this week, I'll have some information." So hopefully, this repair will be done in time for them to start running buses over this.
So Terry, do you wanna move forward with Sukup then?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I will say that I was, been in contact as well with the state, the ER specialists out there. And they're, they're fine with moving, moving forward with this project to get this completed, to get this emergency repair done. But they would like to go into mitigation work and to alleviate this from happening again, because this is the third time. This happened in '14, happened in '19. '19 was not as near, was not as near, eroded away as this. But then again, it happened this year. So every, every five years, we're having this issue. So they would like us to mitigate, I would have a project, come up with some engineering, and do, see what we can do to alleviate the water from topping the road. That means either adding pipe to this or replacing the structure, so.
Terry?
Go ahead, Commissioner Aaron's.
I didn't wanna step on you. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Oh, thank you for tackling this. I've been talking to a lot of the folks who live out there. They've been talking to me. And I also wanna thank you for sending that quick email the other day with some questions that Mr. O'Connor had about the roadway being open or closed. So thank you for responding to that pretty quickly. You never realize how important or popular a road is until you close it, right? And we're seeing that out there, you know, both with the school district and the school busing routes as well as, you know, I went to the GF&amp;P meeting that was held a couple of weeks ago regarding the Lake Alvin project, the same one that was talked about here in our meeting. And there were about 40 people there at that nighttime meeting. And afterwards, a number of them just came to me and started asking what's going on with 135. And I basically told them, like, "You're telling the public right now," which is, you know, "We're gonna do an emergency fix, and we're gonna try to fix it." And I will just say this, you know, obviously, none of these folks are engineers. I'm not an engineer, but a lot of them kept, kept saying, "How come we're not putting more pipes in there?" Or "How come we're not building a bridge structure out there?" Well, it's just a matter of cost, you know? We don't have all the money in the world to be able to provide all these fixes. And I think what the folks at the state are alluding to is maybe the current way that it's engineered, because apparently it goes back to the Depression era, is my understanding. Goes back to the '30s or '40s, from what some of those folks have told me. It's just not standing the test of nature right now. So, you know, I don't wanna throw more, more good money after bad. So we're gonna need to have a more permanent fix to this, but we gotta get it open for now. Because who knows when we'll have the money to provide a more permanent fix?
According to the state ER folks, they're, they want some plans ready by next year to possibly do a mitigation project. And then, again, there will be funding available through the mitigation process, through ER, to help, to help do this repair, is my understanding. So we'll have to come up with a project hopefully for next year. That won't, probably won't happen until '26, I'm assuming. So we'll have to plan ahead in our budgeting process to fit this in, hopefully, if there's gonna be something done.
Is there any plan to provide guardrails out there or anything like that on the sides?
No, no, there's not. So, so that's, that's a good point, because we have a lot of spots in the county. Probably none of them as severe as that for slope. At the very least, we probably should have some cabling system up there. But, so that, that's gonna be part of this safety plan that we're gonna be doing. It's gonna, it's gonna lay out some of these features. So typically, it's gonna go, this plan is, the safety plan is gonna reflect back onto the road design. And anything greater than a four-to-one slope, you're probably gonna have to have protected edges, meaning whether it's guardrail in some of these areas or these cables along these steep areas. And again, that all costs money. But again, it's something that, that if we, that's where we wanted to go, we will be, we'll be starting to put that in our budgets, so.
Yeah, I mean, we, unfortunately, we can't just solve every problem. We don't have enough money for it. And we've gotta make tough decisions on the budget, and I just appreciate you looking at it. There was a gentleman out there who backed off of the cliff, lost his life a day or two after the flooding occurred, and he lived just down the road. Lives at that house with all the big grain silos there on the south side of Lake Alvin. And so there was loss of life there. It's unfortunate and tragic. Hopefully, we can look at that.
Okay, before I entertain a motion, is there any public input on this matter? If not, I guess.
Terry, would you go back to the slide with the actual roadway? When you, when you wanna repair that, when Sukup comes along, what do you do? Just add filled dirt on the side? You keep dumping until you get a certain?
Yeah, we'll dump it. They'll dump it over the top, and then they push it over the edge. They'll probably have a dozer that'll push, be pushing it down the slopes.
And then you try to get a slope that isn't as steep, right?
Yep. So, so one thing, one, one thing that we're gonna have to deal with this year that we never had to before is, you'll see in the picture, there's these orange lines. So that is new, that it's Alliance Communications has their, their fiber lines for rural broadband running through there now. So that's something we're gonna have to take into consideration. We'll have to meet out on site and make sure we don't damage those. So that, that'd be something a little more that's gonna add a little hiccup into it, but.
Okay. Anyway, thank you, Terry.
Yeah, thank you. No, no other public input?
No.
If not, I guess I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, I would move to authorize the Highway Superintendent to move forward with the bid that was received from Sukup Construction for the emergency repair to the structure.
Second.
Okay, motion by Landin, second by Aaron's. Any other further discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landin?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Myers, the airport.
Good morning. Dave Myers from the airport. One of the events that we have at the airport is called Wheels and Wings, and that was last month at the airport. And it just draws a lot of people from the community, just not from the T area, but the Sioux Falls, Harrisburg area and so forth. That event was very successful. And about a week after that, Mike Schulte from Schulte Subaru in Sioux Falls called and wondering if he could bring his, I think they call it Donuts and Wheels, out to our airport. Donuts and Wheels is every second Saturday in Sioux Falls, and it draws many, many cars. So he'd like to bring that event out to our airport and just kind of showcase the cars at our place. He's running out of space, and he thought it'd be good for the airport and good for his business also to come out there. He's willing to give the airport and our local EAA group $1,000 to do that. So he wanted to do it this Saturday, but it's just, it's too rapid to do it that quickly. It's, there's a lot of planning that goes involved. He will take care of most of the planning from porta-potties, breakfast, and all those types of things. So we're looking at probably the September 14th date as a date that he would come out to, he would advertise. And that would give us plenty of time to set up and make, make the event successful. I don't wanna rush into anything and just have it just done halfway. I just want it done the right way. From the safety standpoint of our tenants and hangar owners that are moving aircraft and things like that, it all has to be organized and orchestrated very, very thoroughly. An event like this is huge, and he believes that there'll be a lot of people there. Just not the people that drive the vehicles there, but also from the community. So it's a great PR for our airport, to showcase our airport, what's all going, what's happening at the airport, and just moving forward with that.
I know.
You would be the 14th to advertise, but you'd still have it the 24th?
He would advertise it this Saturday to the people. They'll have an event this Saturday at his place.
Okay.
He would advertise it for the 14th at our airport.
So, yeah, I think our, our agenda probably is a typo because they do that event on the second Saturday, I believe, of every month. So that would make sense, that that would be the 14th and not the 24th. It's a really great event, lots of people. And I know when I've been by there, people are, if there's a lack of parking, there's just, there's a real need for a bigger place to have that event. And I'm, I don't know what it's, is it Cars and Coffee or?
Donuts and Wheels.
Donuts and Wheels.
Okay.
If you've ever been there, you should, everybody, you can.
Yeah, it's really neat.
Find any vintage car from all the way 50s and.
It's really neat. So I'm glad that that's, that they're looking at the airport to host that event. So I can, I'll support that.
There's been a 1986 Camaro there that if somebody wanted to take home, that would be available. Bright red, relive your youth, T-tops. I mean, sold by an yard. Mr. Poppins, any interest?
Dave, thanks for bringing this forward. Donuts and Wheels is five blocks from my house, Schulte Subaru. We're there a lot, and it's a lot of fun and a lot of kids and old-time cars. You talk to the old-timers about their cars, and they love telling you all about them. I'm sure Commissioner Schmidt will be there with his. And then, and they've got, and then they've got everything from the old-time cars all the way up to Lamborghinis and Maseratis, and it's just, it's a lot of fun, it's a great event. It's in my neighborhood, too. I mean, you know, Schulte is, he's a good neighbor. So it's a lot of fun to go to these.
Good. You're not asking for a motion, Dave? You, you just discussion, or are you?
I'm asking for permission that the commission will allow the airport to have that event at our, at the airport. That's what I'm asking for.
I think you have support. I would just maybe check on liability coverage.
Yeah.
And who's gonna carry that?
Okay. Dave, thank you. Not a motion, but I do think we'll have to have a formal agreement. You know, ratified for that, but it sounds like you got support from the board to move forward. The comments that I'll make is, we did have a meeting with a few of the advisory individuals from at the airport. The Wings and Wheels, which I had attended, was, ran very well. This would be a much larger event. But again, going back to the purpose of the airport and trying to give back to the non-maybe flyers of the, of the county and the area, it's a good event for, you know, the public to come out and utilize that property. The users or the advisory group showed support for it. I do believe it will be on a test run, just to see how safety is a big thing out there. And there's a lot of issues that way, especially the more people that get out there. The one thing that I will recommend is that we develop a very precise policy for this event as well as anybody else that may come along wanting to do other activities at the airport outside of the direct flying, so that we have a clear policy in place. And it'll take some time to get that done, Dave, but we'll need you to probably start working on that so that other individuals understand what can or cannot happen out there, so.
Okay. Good enough. I guess you have our blessing, so go for it. Thank you, Dave.
So on that, are we bringing it back another week for the contract between them?
Yeah, once they get the contract to ratify, we'll have to bring that back.
Okay.
That'd be my thought.
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's move on then. Our next item is Mr. DeGroot on rules and regulations about parliamentary procedure or some.
Yeah, Commissioners, Drew DeGroot from the State Attorney's Office came last week regarding rules of procedure. As we discussed, there, there's really no objection, so we put it back on the agenda for further discussion and possible action. Like I said, last week, or excuse me, when it was presented, Minnion County, Pennington County, Brown County, they all have rules of procedure. A lot of larger counties have those in place. It's, it's up to the commission, obviously. It'd be something that oversees the commission itself. Just different things like rules of procedure went back through past meeting minutes. I don't think Robert's Rules of Order have ever been formally adopted, even though I know the commission attempts to follow those. So that's in there, I think, under section 5.1, that the county commission isn't formally adopting Robert's rules, but will attempt to follow those. There's other.
Is the word "attempt" in there?
It is. It's a shall attempt.
Awesome.
And so there's other just procedural matters, like voting, that the chair won't make a motion or second, but shall be a part of voting. Just setting for a standard for the commission moving forward. As I said, it started developing these back in May. Now they're coming for you for action. Be happy to change anything also. We can amend any portions of it if the commission sees fit.
Yeah, the part I don't like, Drew, that I take issue with, is there is a provision in there that requires, moving forward, any issue to be supported by two commissioners instead of one commissioner. Currently, it just takes one commissioner to put an issue on the agenda. I think that's worked very well for us. I don't see any issues with that. So, you know, I can't support this because it changes the status quo that I think has worked very well for us. But also, in the future, if there would be unpopular ideas or things that one, only one commissioner supports, unfortunately, the other four have a veto over one commissioner who may wanna put something on, on the agenda for discussion. And I think it is important to, for commissioners who are elected to be able to give their constituents a voice, even if the issue may not pass. But if it can't even get on the agenda, then it doesn't even get a discussion at all. And I think that would be unfortunate. And I just don't see an issue that we've had with the agendas. It's not as if somebody puts 15 issues on the agenda or has abused the process or anything here, which is good. I think there's mostly been common sense. And so for that reason, I can't support that provision in it. Now, if there was consensus here to amend that out and change that part of it, I wouldn't stand in the way of the rest of the proceedings. stand in the way of the rest of the procedure, but that provision I'm not supportive of, so I can't support it for that reason.
Yeah, that's understandable, and we can amend whatever the commission sees fit. For some context, the other counties actually have it needed to be in writing for approval to get on there, and we amended, or I amended that, to take that option out, that we don't need writing to the chair. So I did make some changes to it, so it's not so stringent, but I understood that there may be some hesitation about needing two commissioners, so...
You bring up a very good point, actually, and I know we're kind of digging in the weeds here, maybe it's wearing my attorney hat right now, but when we were in front of the city of Sioux Falls a number of months ago for a joint meeting, and I think we were discussing the cannabis regulations, and that would have been more than a few months ago. You weren't with us at that time, Bill Golden was yet, but one of the issues that arose there is, I wanted to make an amendment on the scene after hearing some of the testimony because it was a public hearing, and one of the Sioux Falls City Councilors said, "Well, you need to have that amendment prepared ahead of time." And I think I said to him, "Well, hold on a minute here. That presupposes the testimony that we just heard, and you can't prejudge the testimony at a public hearing before you hear it." So I think those are some of the challenges we get when we get a little too stringent with regard to the procedure. So, yeah. So thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. DeGroot by this commission?
Mr. Chairman, a comment on that. I understand your concern about that, but any commissioner still has the ability during their forum time to bring up topics that might not be on the agenda if there is issues in a district. So I do believe you still have a forum to bring to light issues that would reside in a district that may or may not have had enough support to get it on the agenda, so...
Thank you. Any other discussion items? Notice he's asking for board action, so is there any public input on this matter? Who would like to go first? Okay.
How do I use the overhead? Doc Cam, maybe?
Set it down. Just set it down.
The wizard in the background is it for you?
Okay, on this one, where it talks about the calendar, it says Department Presentations January through May, but it looks like on the May one, it was left off. But my question is, does that mean that I actually would prefer having more department presentations in the future, like, for instance, just what happened with the sheriff, the standoff on Cliff and 57th? It would have been really nice to have Sheriff Swenson here talking about how that was resolved without, I mean, it took a long time for that to resolve, but there were no injuries, there was no deputy injuries, no detriment to the public, and it would be nice to know what resources he had there, how he used it, so that the public would know exactly what he did to make that such a perfect ending to that particular story. So that was my one question, is if you establish that, can you not have our other department presentations, like the sheriff, I think, or some of the other departments, I think, need to be on a regular basis to come before the public? And then the other one that I have was on the gift part. I don't have that with me, but the gifts, it was kind of confusing because on one part, it says that you can't even do a food item, and then later on, it's talking about like $100 or less. But I know that there are times that the public has even brought in cookies or whatever to share with the public, and does that mean that that would be illegal for us to do or, you know, bring in somebody a cup of coffee? In that one segment, it says that that would be illegal or unethical or whatever. So I question that, too, to be able to put that, maybe to combine all of that and say, "Well, you can only, anything that's under $100, you know, whatever." But anyway, and then on the third question I have, because of what happened at the state level, is the lobby group for the county commissioners, the South Dakota county commissioners, are they looking into what the county can do to, like, for what happened at DSS for that $1.8 million allegedly stolen? We need to probably bring that into the county level as well, because there is no oversight that I know of that would get us to that point that we can, I mean, I know you, you know me, but that doesn't mean that if I wanted to steal something, that there's no oversight for that. So I would ask if that be addressed as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input?
Linda Montgomery from Fairview, South Dakota. Commissioner Aaron's brought up the needing to commissioners to approve something to get on the agenda. And in response to Commissioner Poppins, if it was on the forum part, you couldn't get public comment. And I believe, you know, you have to have the minority also heard, and sometimes if something's happening in one community or one precinct or a couple of precincts that are in your, if you're in charge of them, it's hard to get to sometimes. And I just believe that I agree with Commissioner Aaron's on that topic. I would like to see it stay the same. The other one is public comment time. Now, many communities, including Minnehaha, still have a five-minute time limit for public comment. We used to, and now it's very difficult when I get before you or anyone gets before you to cut it down to three minutes. When we spend the time to come to public comment, I believe that five minutes is very appropriate, and other counties have kept theirs at five minutes. I would like you to consider taking it back to five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input?
Good morning. Scott Montgomery, Fairview. I'm going to give it real short and sweet. If it's not broke, why fix it? Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. Seeing none, I guess, do we have any board action at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I myself am not ready to vote on this yet, so I would, I guess, be supportive of tabling it for now.
Would you like to table it?
Mr. Chairman, I would vote to table this till the first meeting in September.
And I could second that. I would second that if that's your motion, Commissioner.
That's my motion.
Okay. Commissioner Schmidt made the motion. Landine seconded. Any discussion?
There's no issue with tabling it. I don't think it's urgent. I do think that some policies should be put into place. The public raised questions of not being able to talk if it's not on the agenda, but that's actually contrary, because everyone still has the ability to speak about any issue that's not on the agenda. So if there is an issue, it still can be raised, which then can lead to possibly support or action further on. It's just a matter of keeping meetings efficient for both the commission and the public to understand what the policies and procedures are. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. If not, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes.
Motion carried to table. Next, as far as opportunity for public comment. Good morning.
Good morning. It's Dean, Commissioners. Representative Ernie Otten here, out of District 6, Harrisburg, Southern Sioux Falls and T. I come before you to recognize two individuals for their outstanding and tireless leadership in two specific projects. First, Commissioner Schmidt, along with Representative Wester, at that time the District 13, for a long-term vision to develop the 85th interchange into a tax increment district, number 10. This tip will provide great economic growth in this area for generations to come. And then Commissioner Tiffany Landine, during her tenure as chair, which resulted in the groundbreaking later this morning for the much-needed Justice Center. Both of these projects took extreme courage and overcome personal and public opposition from each of you as commissioners to create a vision for the future of Lincoln County, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Representative Otten, it's good to see you back.
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. Little different topic for me, but what was brought up today as far as the water issues here in Canton, for the, and the whole, you know, the price of growth sometimes causes these problems, as well as poor planning. And they discussed the water issues that might have been caused by the new convention center, and I'm just bringing that up because of the Justice Center, and I go to the church that is just immediately south. And we knew that there was water issues, and when I brought it up to the engineer a number of times ago, and she said that she was, they were going to build up the Justice Center so that it could actually be seen above the church. And that, you know, when you guys were talking about this water issue, I would like to see a plan for how the Justice Center, how the engineer is going to take care of water issues that might, I'm not going to say it, will, that might be concerning for the people around the Justice Center. And so I really think we should have a good plan in place for water issues that might be created, because we know that with the rain and everything, there was considerable water on that property, which, you know, but she was going to build it up so that it could be seen, and that may or may not cause water issues for the surrounding properties. I just think it would be nice to see a plan that she might have for water control. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. How about any commissioners to report?
Couple of items, Mr. Chairman. We just concluded the 4H Achievement Days in Lenox. I know several commissioners were there. One of the things that I think was a very pronounced from the public was that the 4H advisors, kids, whatever, have done a tremendous job in raising the funds necessary to put all the buildings up. They have the show ring ready, they have all the buildings for beef, swine, and goats and sheep and rabbits and ag, but I'm all.
Dogs.
Anyway, it was really, really a kind of a, an event that showed if you all get on the same page and you're kind of united in something, what they can do. The number of exhibits is up this year, not necessarily in animals. They are struggling to maintain because it reflects a kind of our ag base in our county, but the number of actual exhibits for kids that participated in painting and photography and crafts and all that kind of stuff, if you went in the building, it was completely full. So I think that was, they did an excellent job. So that's something that will continue to grow. I know there was some discussion on some people that the one thing they're looking into is a carnival. And if you read my brother's comments in the Lenox Independent back in whatever year, I don't know, they used to have a fair, so who knows? We might end up with Lincoln County Fair rivaling the Turner County Fair or something like that. The other thing, last week, the commissioners put on a picnic for the staff here at the right outside. John Rambo, I want to toss a bone to him and to our HR director for helping organize that. We had well over 100 people that came out and participated, and it was a way for the commissioners to say thank you to the staff for their hard work and their dedication to the residents of this county. And sometimes we don't say thank you enough, so it was a good time, held by all. It did not come out of the, any commission budget. It came out of the pockets of the commissioners paid for this thing. So it was a way in which to say thank you. And, you know, we don't do that enough, and I just want to share this one. I talked with a candidate, a candidate for the Minnehaha County Commission yesterday, and this individual worked for 18 years in Minnehaha County and never, ever talked with a commissioner. I think that was, she just shook her head in saying, you know, "How could this be?" So I hope we never have someone leaves here that moves on that ever says that they haven't had some appreciation or having some contact with a commissioner, because I just think in you got a staff as large as we have, it's incumbent upon commissioners to make sure that they understand how much we appreciate them and do listen to any concerns that they have, because that's just good management. So, anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I guess, do we do a motion to adjourn since we're convening at the Justice Center?
If that's the request, I would so move.
Second? Motion and a second? Any discussion? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes.
Motion carried.